May I call to order the regular council meeting for March 12th, 2018? If we'll all stand for a pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Zachary Urban.
Present.
Denise Hoppy.
Present.
Monica Duran.
Here.
Tim Fitzgerald.
Here.
Larry Matthews.
Here.
Leah Dozeman.
Here.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, we have a quorum. Mayor Starker has excused himself for the evening. He's out of town, and that's all I have to report on absences.
Thank you. So now it's time to approve the agenda, agendas.
Actually, you'll need to go to approval of the council minutes.
Excuse me, that's what I meant to say. The approval of council meetings, the council meeting notes for February 12th, 2018. Does anybody have anything to add or subtract? And the agenda, or the notes for the meeting of February 26th, 2018? Any additions or subtractions or changes? And the study session notes for February 26th, 2018? Any additions, subtractions, or changes? Okay, all those in favor? Aye. I guess, do we have to call for a vote?
Typically, you can just declare those approved as presented.
Okay, approved as written. Okay, item one. Zach, would you read us item one? Oh, we do have a list. Okay. I guess I'm getting messed up because I'm a temporary guy tonight, so I'm mayor for two hours, so. What we need to do right now is the citizens' right to speak on items that are not on the agenda. So Dorothy, you're the first. Bob, you are second. Or Bob Razzle is second, right? And Raleigh, you're third.
My name is Dorothy Archer. Address is 3640 Marshall Street. Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, council, staff, and citizens. Tonight I would like to address the word "sustainable." A few weeks ago, a young lady spoke on the housing issues in Jefferson County. She was concerned about the fact that Wheat Ridge did not have a representative on this council. I know we have a group of citizens who are working on sustainability issues. Perhaps someone has offered to join this Jefferson County group in representation for Wheat Ridge. Housing affordable is a main issue I want to draw your attention to. The word "affordable," one more time, I will address. Once a small home has been purchased, scraped, and a three-story building put in its place, we go from what we now call affordable, which is somewhere between $300,000 and $400,000, to $600,000 and $700,000. Basically, when that happens, you have left another middle-class family out of the ability to buy a home. I am fully aware of the survey that you have created, which I thank you for. I would like to ask some of the, do we have a date for that mailing?
It's already been sent out.
When, hon?
It's already going out.
It's already in the mail?
Mm-hmm. Some people have already received it.
It is a representative sample. Not everybody will get one.
Okay. If someone did not get one and wants one, can they come to the city offices and obtain one?
So it's a random sample that is put together from a list of registered voters, so it's a representative sample, so that's the only sample size that they would have in those. There's a methodology behind that that's used by testing.
So if you did not get one in the mail, then you're not part of that survey, is that correct?
Yes, that would be correct.
You see me here every single day if I didn't get one? I'm just kidding, okay? All right. The next time I address council, it will be on an issue that has to do with the master plan. True, it was written in 2009, but if you would, please, take it upon yourselves to go online, draw that master plan up. It's like 138 pages, but I want you to make reference to page 51. Wheat Ridge's own wording on the master plan is the very issue I have been here for every other week. That will be my next issue in two weeks, is the master plan. Please take a look at it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I did get my survey notice. A little postcard says I'm going to get the survey, which is fine, but I looked, I wasn't able to come to the meeting where you discussed the survey and how it was put together and all that, but I did read over the survey and the questions on the survey. And I just want to know, you know, you can pretty much get any answer you want on how you asked the question. So on ADUs, it's not, you know, a full explanation of what an ADU is for the citizens who don't know what it is, and then an answer, do you approve or disapprove? That should be the entire survey on ADUs. But it's a question, do you like them or you don't like them? And since we're going to have them anyway, these are the four or five items that you can agree or disagree with, that you want the people have to live there, or whatever, I remember all the little deals. So it's pretty much a stacked deck. So, you know, it's not a very well-witted survey, so you should probably not have local works write your surveys. You probably should do them yourself. But, and then we're going to have an online survey beside that survey, which they said, "Well, that's not scientific, but, you know, it'll be a survey where we can, where we can get more input from the other citizens." Well, that's fine and dandy. I like people to participate, but the only problem I see with that, I don't know, was that approved? I wasn't here.
No, there will not be an online survey.
Oh, well, well.
And the reason is, we hired a special company to design this and write this, and the people chosen are chosen specifically because they, together as a group, represent the entire city in all sections, all economic levels, and so on. And we did review it, and we did talk about the language on the questions. We questioned the authors of the survey about the questions and the wording themselves. And we are aware that some appear difficult to understand if you don't know what you're talking, you know, what the issue is.
Yeah.
But our consultants have assured us that they will still be valid answers.
Well, I understand how random surveys, and I appreciate that, but I think your questions kind of invalidate your survey. Because what am I going to, am I going to come down and have you help me fill this out? I don't want ADUs, and I don't want them no matter what you do. So why should I answer the rest of those questions? Do you see where I'm coming from? Okay. Well, thank you. I hope you take that all into consideration when you evaluate the survey. I think, you know, however you ask the question is how you get the answer. So it should be done where you get legitimate answers, not ones that somebody wants. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Raleigh Sorrentino. I live at 4175 Teller Street. Couple of little quick stories here. I had the opportunity last week to speak to one of your council members, and they asked me about what I thought about this issue of pop tops 35 feet, 25 feet, and I didn't have a good answer at the time. Dorothy Archer's campaign to mediate some of that. After I left, I got to thinking about it, and it seems to me that even though I got my own opinion, I don't like to see all the rentals in Wheat Ridge. But that aside, it seems like what she's offering, and she's done some research on it for other cities, is a compromise from 35 feet to 25 feet with sloped roofs. But that isn't the main point of that encounter. The point of that encounter is that somebody asked me that question, which is Dorothy's cause, which means you guys are listening, and I appreciate that very much. So I'm taking Dorothy's lead, and you may see me here every week from now on. Secondly, last Thursday night, I was driving east on 44th Avenue at Garrison, and I happened to look up and see the lights on the baseball field. They were on. I says, "What's going on?" So I drove in there, didn't see anybody in the infield, but as I drove out there, I looked in the outfield, and there were half a dozen soccer teams out there practicing or playing or something, under the lights. They weren't over on the regular soccer field. They were on the lighted field. It was 6 o'clock at night. So I just wanted to point that little surprise to me, and I think it has significant implications with this Anderson Park. Thank you.
Is anybody else here who wishes to speak on an item that is not on the agenda? Okay, it's time for us to, yeah. Would you reflect that Christie is now here? Yeah. Time for us.
Yeah, let the record reflect that council members, Dozeman and Davis, are now present.
Councilwoman Dozeman.
Well, she wasn't at 7 o'clock. I mean, okay. Okay.
It is now time to approve.
Oh, that was you that, oh, okay. You have sort of the same color of hair and top. I was confused.
It is now time to approve the agenda. Does anybody, is anybody willing to take the agenda as it is? All those in favor? Say aye. And we are now at council bill number 4, 2018. Would you read that for us?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. I'm not sure exactly how to address you, but, Councilmember Fitzgerald. Council Bill 04-2018, ordinance amending sections 11-291 and 11-401 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning the authorized activities of marijuana testing facilities. At issue, Council Bill 04-2018 authorizes city-licensed marijuana testing facilities to conduct all marijuana testing activities authorized by state law. Other types of activities, such as cultivation, product development, clinical trials, are still prohibited within testing facilities in the city.
Is there a staff report?
Yes, there is. If you, it's a public hearing. There's no one signed up, but if you'd open the public hearing, we'll make sure the staff report's part of the record.
Okay, this is a public hearing.
The issue was read by Councilmember Urban is correct, and this ordinance continues the distinction between permitting testing, marijuana testing, and other kinds of activities that those testing facilities could undertake. I was not at the study session where, I know council looked at this in a fair amount of detail, but in three different sections of the code, this ordinance clarifies and emphasizes that testing facilities or testing activities are fine, but the other kinds of activities that those organizations would typically undertake, such as research and development, clinical trials, cultivation, are not prohibited, or, excuse me, are not permitted. And that was a line that apparently was important to the council to draw in the study session. Now it's drawn in the code. Happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions or comments from the council? A motion is in order?
I would close the public hearing and take a motion.
I should order, assign an ordinance number.
Okay, would you please assign an ordinance?
This will be ordinance number 1636.
Public hearing is closed.
I move to approve Council Bill 04-2018, ordinance amending sections 11-291 and 11-401 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning the authorized activities of marijuana testing facilities. On second reading, that it take effect 15 days after final publication.
Second.
Would you poll the council?
Is that Councilmember Hoppy was the second? Motion carries seven to zero.
Okay, item number two, Council Bill 06, 2018, an ordinance repealing unnecessary code. I guess this is a public hearing, so you want me to open the public hearing?
Please, thank you.
And Zach, would you?
Yep. Council Bill 06, 2018, an ordinance repealing unnecessary code sections in Chapter 19 concerning civil service procedures for the police department. At issue, this ordinance repeals Article II of Chapter 19 of the Code of Laws concerning civil service procedures for the police department. These procedures are out of date and no longer used. This is a city code cleanup item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There's no one signed up on this matter, and I'm also the staff report. We've had this Article II, a series of some six or eight sections, in Chapter 19 of the code for a long time. The last time it was amended really was in 2002, and it addresses such things as the composition and duties of the police department, probationary period language, armed forces services. Honestly, these are all topics that are covered, and covered much better, in the more recent city personnel policies that apply to all city employees, and there's just no reason to have them in the code, and in fact, they conflict with some of the provisions in the city's overall personnel policies. And it's my recommendation, that of the chief, that these can simply be repealed, and that will assist in making certain that we have a single personnel policy track record on a number of procedures that we have to undertake on a regular basis, and we don't want there to be confusion amongst the public or the employees, for that matter, what applies.
Is there anyone who wishes to speak on this issue? Are there any councils who wish to speak on this issue?
I had a question for the city attorney. In the existing code language, there's some discussion regarding requirements to testify as it relates to members of the police department are required to testify, and I'm curious whether or not that continues to be a requirement within the personnel policies.
So there are two policies that apply to our employees. The first are city personnel policies, and the second are our department policies, so in our code of conduct and in other areas of our policy, you know, that's covered, that would be considered a neglected duty kind of situation, so.
So they'd still be required to testify?
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
It's a requirement in the position.
Thank you.
Any other? Yes?
This will be ordinance number 1637.
Okay, no one else wishes to speak? Hearing is closed. Would you please poll the council?
I got a.
Oh.
I move to approve Council Bill 06-2018, an ordinance repealing unnecessary code sections in Chapter 19 concerning civil service procedures for the police department on second reading, and that it take effect upon adoption.
Second.
Okay, now you can.
Let us clear, vote again, because that was, some people voted and some didn't. All right, let's try it again. There we go. Motion carries seven to zero.
Okay, item number three. Okay, very good. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on item three? Christie, would you read?
Sure. Council Bill number 07-2018, an ordinance approving the rezoning of the property located at 6320 West 44th Avenue from Neighborhood Commercial NC to mixed-use neighborhood MUN, case number WZ-18-02/Wedgewood. This is an ordinance on the first reading. The applicant is requesting approval of a zone change from Neighborhood Commercial to mixed-use neighborhood for the property located at 6320 West 44th Avenue. That's just for those folks, that's kind of right near Hopper Hollow Park. The proposed rezoning area includes one parcel, the total size, which is approximately one quarter of an acre. At this time, the applicant is not proposing any new development or modification to the site if the property is redeveloped in the future. Under the proposed mixed-use zoning, mixed-use neighborhood zoning and administrative site plan review would be required to confirm that proposed development meets the standards of the mixed-use zone district.
This is an ordinance on the first reading, so there is no testimony here.
Okay, thank you. A motion is in order, so I move to approve Council Bill number 07-2018, an ordinance approving the rezoning of property located at 6320 West 44th Avenue from Neighborhood Commercial NC to mixed-use neighborhood MUN. On first reading, order it published, public hearing set for Monday, April 9th, 2018, at 7:00 PM in City Council chambers, and that it take effect 15 days after final publication.
Second.
You're going to vote? Okay.
I pressed the wrong button. I pressed the mayor's button, is that okay?
You pressed what?
Pressed the mayor's button instead of my own button.
Oh.
I think we all need to go home soon.
Yeah.
Wouldn't be the first time you pressed some people's buttons.
It's okay with me.
Okay.
It's okay with Mr. Doll.
It's okay with me.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Okay, well, we got over that, huh? Okay, item number four, Leah.
Thank you. Motion to approve payment to Kaiser Permanente for February 2018 and March 2018 membership billing in the amount of $195,376.34 and $218,976.12, respectively, and 12 cents, respectively. So at issue for 2018, the city offers employees two medical plans through Kaiser Permanente, a high deductible plan and a deductible HMO plan. Both plans are offered as Cobra protection for former employees who choose to enroll. February monthly billing is in the amount of $195,376.34, and March monthly billing is in the amount of $218,976.12, which requires City Council approval.
How many cents is that?
Right.
Is there any comment on that from anybody? Okay, a motion is in order.
I move to pay the February 2018 Kaiser bill in the total amount of $195,376.34, and the March 2018 Kaiser bill in the total amount of $218,976.12.
Second.
Okay, so, please poll the council.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Okay, number five, Monica.
Thank you. Resolution number 15-2018, opposing conversion therapy for minors in Wheat Ridge and supporting a statewide ban against conversion therapy for minors. At issue, at City Council's request, the topic of conversion therapy was brought before council as a discussion item on the February 26th study session. The Colorado cities of Edgewater and Westminster have passed proclamations or resolutions addressing the opposition of conversion therapy. Currently, there are nine U.S. states that have banned conversion therapy on minors: New Jersey in 2013, California 2012, Oregon in 2015, Illinois in 2015, Vermont in 2016, New Mexico in 2017, Connecticut in 2017, Rhode Island 2017, and Nevada in 2017. Background: Conversion therapy is a harmful practice, especially for younger people. Over the years, many professional organizations have stated this fact formally. The American Psychological Association, American Academy of Child and Adolescent Psychiatry, American School Counselor Association, and other professional organizations concluded that sexual orientation and gender identity change efforts can pose ethical or critical health risks to lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer LGBTQ people. Despite the overwhelming evidence that this is a destructive practice, it is still being administered often by licensed professionals. In 2001, United States Surgeon General David Satcher issued a report stating that there is no evidence conversion therapy is effective. In 2007, the American Psychological Association convened a task force that concluded LGBTQ people subjected to conversion therapy are eight times more likely to attempt suicide, nearly six times as likely to report depression, three times as likely to use illegal drugs, and more than three times as likely to be at high risk for HIV and sexually transmitted infections. Starting in 2013, other states and municipalities in our nation began passing laws banning conversion therapy. By continuing to raise awareness on the municipal level, future abuses may be prevented. Recognizing the harmful abuse of conversion therapy promotes a healthy and inclusive community where LGBTQ people are welcomed and engaged.
Thank you. We have one person from the audience signed up for this. April Alexander.
I'm April Alexander, and that's spelled A-P-R-Y-L-A-L-E-X-A-N-D-E-R. Again, thank you guys for hearing us testify once again. Again, I'm in support of this resolution and want to thank you guys for taking the time to consider this resolution. As the stats just said, we are facing a kind of crisis with our LGBTQ youth being at risk for mental health conditions, suicide, and just not having a sufficient place to go, thinking about kind of the stigma behind this practice in clinical psychology, counseling, and social work. I'm. and social work. So it's really important for us to communicate to those youth that there are alternatives, that organizations like the American Psychological Association do support more affirmative, evidence-based, trauma-informed treatment approaches. And so I hope that we will, that you all consider this tonight as kind of a first step for the state of Colorado. Next week, the Capitol will hear a similar bill, so I'm hoping that this will be the year that it gets passed in the state. So thank you for your time again.
Thank you.
Is there anyone, anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak on this issue? Okay, councilors?
Motion in order.
Motion is in order. Well, do you have...
I guess that's the motion.
Okay. Motion is in order.
Thank you. I move to approve Resolution number fifteen dash twenty-eighteen, a resolution opposing conversion therapy for minors in Wheat Ridge and supporting a statewide ban against conversion therapy for minors.
Second.
Councilors, anyone wish to speak? Zach?
I'm just curious whether or not there's been any evidence or information brought forward regarding this practice specifically within the city of Wheat Ridge, whether there are any of the currently licensed therapists or counselors that are currently providing conversion therapy, or whether any current Wheat Ridge residents have received this therapy within the city of Wheat Ridge.
I am not aware of any, doesn't, but, but I'm not aware of any, so.
And then a question for the city attorney as it relates to this being a resolution. What is the, the force of this particular or, or resolution as it relates to banning conversion therapy practices within the city of Wheat Ridge?
Well, the city has to act by ordinance to regulate any, any business or any occupation. City's done that, requiring, for example, registration licenses from various trades and occupations in the building, in, in the building trades, plumbers, et cetera, have to be licensed by the city. So this is a resolution, and so therefore, if, if someone's practicing conversion therapy in the city, this resolution does not make it illegal. It's not something you'd be able to cite someone to municipal court for. I do observe that the, the resolution, you know, urges that, that, you know, that legislation be passed, so it clearly can be used to, to influence legislation at the state level, which is where I, as I understand it, the, the proponents would, would rather have action because then you do it once at the state and you're done. But short answer to your question is it's a resolution urging various actions, but it's not something that, that can be enforced in the sense of writing tickets into municipal court.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Larry?
Thank you. I, I have a couple of issues with the resolution itself. I'm certainly against any draconian eighteen-nineties-style mental illness approaches to dealing with people and whatever their issues are. House member, in one sense, I find this resolution being overly simplistic, in that it really does not, and I asked this question earlier, define exactly what you're referring to as conversion therapy. And you go online, you can get about three or four different definitions. And I would much rather see some of that included, because right now, it's just a catch-all. I mean, are you including ice pick lobotomies and ice baths and electroshock, or are you, are you trying to exclude some kind of pharmaceutical issue? That I just don't know. The other side of this coin, for me, is that I always believed, before we pass a resolution, that we should hear from both sides of an issue. And trust me, I'm not for the things I just mentioned. But on the other hand, when you, when, from the research, what research I was able to do, there are a lot of doctors with the same credentials that you're mentioning that are against. Um, I think what you are trying to support is therapies in the other direction, in which they can take drugs to treat, you know, if a male, a male, biological male wants to be female, you're in favor, from what I can sense, that they'd be allowed to have hormone therapies and things of that nature, which, from the research I've found, that's also can be detrimental and dangerous to the children. The other part of this that I'm a little bit worried about is parental rights. And I've always been against government incursion into family issues and the family's right to treat themselves as they see fit. Again, I, I don't have an easy answer. I have a couple things yellowed here, and just so that, because I'm not describing what I'm saying very well, I'd read a couple. Doctor Haruets also voiced serious concerns about treating young people with intense and potentially dangerous off-label hormone, hormone therapy without subjecting the regimen to rigorous scientific testing. And that would be if a male or female wants, identifies in the op- different direction. So I, I don't see any of that addressed in this resolution. Um, it's just impossible for me to tell. I'm all for protecting the children. And I think we have to protect them from possibly both sides of this argument a little bit, and also protect the family unit. And I don't see any of that in this. I can go on more, but, um... Kritella, another doctor, explained the health risks of putting children on puberty blockers and hormones associated with the opposite sex. The use of these drugs, she said, is treating puberty like a disease, arresting a normal process which is critical to normal development of four kids. And there, for brevity right now, I'll stop, and if someone asks questions, I'd be happy. There's more, more issues here. But I'm going to be voting no on this, just because I don't think it's appropriate, appropriately written, and I don't think it gives appropriate protection for the children on all aspects of this issue.
Is there anyone else?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I first would like to say thank you to everyone who took the time to email me asking for my support. I, when it came up last time, I was supportive, and so I have forwarded those emails to Ms. Shaver so that they can be a part of our meeting record, and I appreciate you taking the time. I have firsthand witness and knowledge of youth. I worked with a lot of homeless and runaway youth, and throwaway youth who were kicked out of their homes due to being gay. I've also worked with kids who have come out of what we called back then "straight camp", and I've witnessed the psychological damage and the damage it takes to their self-esteem, and then the harmful acting out that they do after that, because they don't know, they don't feel safe, and they don't feel comfortable, and they don't feel in control when adults are telling them they're wrong about who they think they are. One part of this resolution that I would like to read is, "Whereas the city of Wheat Ridge knows that being lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and/or queer is not a disease, a disorder, a deficient, deficiency, or shortcoming. In fact, being part of the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer community is a diversity that can be celebrated and one of the many cultural groups within our community." I will be supporting this.
Monica?
I'd like to reinforce the fact and say thank you for everyone who came today to speak and who came last time to speak. I really appreciate it. I think if we're going to get into the weeds of this, that's something for the legislator, legislator, legislation to get a hold of and to discuss and to figure out. I think it does narrow down to that exact paragraph, and let me read it again. "Whereas the city of Wheat Ridge knows that being lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and/or queer is not a disease, disorder, deficiency, or shortcoming. In fact, being part of the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, LGBTQ community is a diversity to be celebrated and one of many cultural groups within our community." That's what I feel is important in the message we need to give as a council and as a community, that we are inclusive, we are accepting, we are tolerant, and that's how we want to move forward. So if we want to get into the weeds of how this is all going to work and, and hearing both sides, there are a lot of privacy HIPAA issues too to consider, but I think for me, this resolution, this four or five lines states what I'm trying to, to get across here and what I'm hoping you all will support. Thank you.
You know, I'd like to add that parental rights are limited. We don't allow parents to act against the public good. So, for example, we would not allow a parent to murder a female child because they prefer a male. So parental rights are limited by the good of society. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Resolutions in order? Or motions in order?
You already have a motion.
It's already been done. So...
Time to vote. Um, motion carries, motion carries six to one with Councilmember Matthews voting no.
Okay, um, item number six. And I did not write down who is doing number six, so, oh, that'd be you, okay. Yes, here it is. Okay, please calm us with your...
Agenda item number six for this evening is a motion to approve the installation of a traffic calming device on Ammon Street between Thirty-Eighth and Thirty-Ninth Avenues in accordance with the Neighborhood Traffic Management Program, which is shortened to NTMP. At issue, recently, residents on Ammon Street petitioned the city to address traffic issues for the segment of Thirty-Eighth to Thirty-Ninth Avenue. In accordance with the city's Neighborhood Traffic Management Policy, the city conducted a public process and met with residents over two neighborhood meetings to discuss and address traffic issues, primarily speeding. Residents subsequently secured a petition with the necessary amount of signatures to support the installation of a traffic calming device, a speed hump in this case, in accordance with NTMP policy. Under financial impact, funding for this program was approved in the Neighborhood Traffic Management Projects line item of the twenty eighteen Capital Improvement Program budget in the amount of thirty thousand dollars. A speed hump is estimated to cost approximately six thousand dollars, and it would appear that we are well within our budget for the year so far.
Okay, so we have a person signed up for this, Shirley Dingerson. And we also have John Brown, who, who follows that.
My name is Shirley Dingerson, and I live at thirty-eight sixty-five Ammon Street. And I'm here to say, I ask for this to be approved, because our street is like a racetrack. It's, it's a shortcut between Thirty-Eighth and Forty-Fourth, so they don't have to go down to Wadsworth and then down, go north. And I myself have had several close calls with cars almost clipping me, because they don't pay attention. It's a good shortcut, if that's what you're looking for. You don't have signals on it. And so I'm, I'm in favor, and I wanted you folks to know. I like the term "traffic calming device." I thought that was very good. I call it a traffic bump or a speed bump, but thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, John Brown?
John, John Brown, thirty-eight seventy-four Ammon Street. And give you a little bit of...
Can you spell your last name, please?
B-R-O-W-N.
Oh, okay.
In twenty fourteen, we did a speed study here in a car count. We had eight hundred and seven vehicles in two days, and twenty-seven percent exceeded the speed limit. And that was conducted by the city of Wheat Ridge. We did not get a speed bump at that time because our adjoining street had higher numbers. Last summer, we had the speed trailer there four times, and people just totally ignore We would like to see this approved. Any questions?
No, thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak?
Mr. Chairman, the Public Works Director is here and can give a staff report and answer any questions about this, if you like.
Please do. Thank you. Um, yes, this is the result of a public process that started back in late two thousand fourteen and into two thousand fifteen. Ammon Street at this location, Thirty-Eighth to Thirty-Ninth, and then there was also a similar request on Ballsome Street, a block over from Thirty-Eighth up to Thirty-Ninth and on up to Forty-first. And then we also had, we also pulled in Ammon Street from Forty-first up to Forty-fourth as part of that. So we ran a public process with a couple of public meetings that overlapped some but included all of those areas. What came out of that at the time was, we did end up putting a speed hump over on Ballsome, the other section of Ammons north of Forty-first. We put in some additional traffic signs, higher use of the speed trailer. And this particular block of Ammons that you see before you tonight, at that time, there, there wasn't enough collective support to do a, a speed hump at that time, but the residents were made known that, you know, in, should they want to pursue that further, whether a speed hump or something else, that sure was, that certainly was an option. So just more recently, we did get the petition with the required percentage of eighty percent, plus the folks living right by the speed hump need to approve it as well. So we recommend approval of installation of the speed hump tonight.
Okay, will we have, will someone read a motion, please? That is...
I move to approve the installation of a traffic calming device on Ammon Street between Thirty-Eighth and Thirty-Ninth Avenues in accordance with the Neighborhood Traffic Management Plan.
Second.
Are there comments from council?
I have a comment. I, I just want to say that I support this, and I'm, I'm guessing that most of our councilors will. I think that this is a, a neighborhood that's at risk for a lot of things. First, if you were to go down Ammons a little further, there's an elementary school. And so this neighborhood gets a lot of traffic from the elementary school, and if you go a little bit south, it's also the hospital. So again, they get a lot of cut-through traffic from the hospital as well. And I think as we start seeing the work on Wadsworth, that this neighborhood's only going to become more, unfortunately, perhaps, used in, in these kind of cut-through manners. I only wish, and John will probably, John and I might have to get together another time, is that we'd go further down that corner right there between Melrose, where Melrose and Ammons and Thirty-Ninth. That's like a drag racing corner that you can curve around that pretty darn quick. And it, it's, it's a dangerous corner right there, because it's kind of hairpin-ish. But it is something that I support, and I think it's a, it's all around for the safety of schools and the neighborhood and the kids and, and all those involved. It is something I support.
Thank you. I have a little bit of an aside here, and this issue kind of fits right in with it. I attended one of the, the neighborhood meetings for the Wadsworth Widening Project. And at times, we talked about truck traffic diverting on Thirty-Eighth at times, and also because of the medians. But Kristy also brought up that excellent point, that during, I mean, we think it's bad now that people are diverting that way during construction, it could be even worse. And I would certainly encourage our engineering department, if it's not been done, to try and prognosticate a little bit, based on past experiences elsewhere, on what the diversion's going to do to our side streets around the Wadsworth construction. And not only Thirty-Eighth and Forty-Fourth, but also the north-south ones like that, the shortcuts, and that we might at least try and put a little bit of an eye on being proactive in advance of what to anticipate. It's a tall order, I understand it's not exactly rocket science, but let's, let's at least be aware of it.
Zach?
Thank you. I'd just like to thank the members of Ammon Street...
I'd just like to thank the members of Ammon Street that came out to speak on this, but also just knowing how hard it is to get all neighbors on the block to agree on something. I think this is a, a great testament to that, that a lot of folks will call and, and have issues with speeding in the neighborhood, and this is the appropriate solution to many of those issues. But it does take members of the community coming together and getting their neighbors to agree to this. So I appreciate Ammons being the, the model here for other streets to understand that it does take everybody sort of coming together and agreeing on this. So thank you for coming and speaking today, and also for getting everybody on board. Appreciate it.
Anybody else? Would the clerk poll the council, please?
Motion carries seven to zero.
And now we come to item seven. Janice?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. I would like to bring up that in the past, while we've done appointments and boards and commissions, what we've done is one person from each district makes the appointments for their district, and then the appointed person to, which you have assigned to me, does the at-large. So I would just like to see if there's consensus for us to do it that way again, or if you would like to all send me your sheets, and I'll make all of the appointments in one.
Christie?
Would, would you like to, would we like to move a, make a consensus to move to another meeting, the commission appointments? And can we do that in a timely? I move to, I move to postpone the appointments to the boards and commissions to our next business meeting.
Anybody wish to speak on that? Madam Clerk, would you?
Motion carries seven to zero.
Mr. Chairman, there is one person who had signed up to speak under this agenda item, and that person may well want to come in two weeks. But since that person's here, I think you, you should hear from them, and that way they can choose whether or not they need to come in two weeks.
Okay, yes, I see that now. Thank you. Melissa, would you like to speak?
Yes, I would. Thank you. And I'm happy to show up again if you need me. Melissa Antal, 3540, Holland Street. I came here to introduce myself as one of the applicants for the District III Planning Commission appointment and to really voice my genuine interest in serving in this capacity, you know, providing the commitment and understanding the requirements of the position. I have worked in community development for the past 20 years of my career. I have spent about 12 of those years working in local government. So I am very familiar with the plan development and approval process and helping to advance long-term goals of the city. My educational background is master's in community planning. So I do feel like I have a lot of qualifications that would be really beneficial as a member of the Planning Commission. And most importantly, as a resident of District III, I would really love an opportunity to kind of advance the goals and the vitality of my community, Wheat Ridge. And so I just wanted to introduce myself, put a face with the application, and really just let you know who I am. So thank you.
Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience who wishes to speak? Do we have a second on the?
We did.
Okay.
Mr. Rand seconded that.
Okay.
District one.
All right, would you poll the council? I guess you've already polled? Yeah.
Seven oh.
Okay.
I guess I just have one remaining question on that. It appears that some of the terms are ending as of March 2nd. So is there a way for us to extend those terms till the next meeting, or is that not possible?
It, it may be that.
Are there any meetings?
There are other, there are other terms on those boards, and if you adjust this out two weeks, I'm, I'm just thinking aloud, but, but I think that might, might create more, more trouble than it. Oh, you extend the existing terms?
Correct.
The, the rule is that the Board of Commissioner member, just like a council member, serves until their, their replacement has been nominated and, and confirmed. So there's no need for you to take an action to extend.
Okay, I just want to make sure we didn't have some meeting or some business in front of a committee that wouldn't be impacted by it.
People still in office are holdover commissioners, and so their terms are holdover.
Yeah, we'll develop an agenda quickly.
Yep.
Thank you.
So now we come to item eight.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Item number eight is motion to ratify the mayoral reappointment of Shane Nicholson and Walt Pettit to the at-large positions on the Wheat Ridge Urban Renewal Authority, doing business as Renewal Wheat Ridge, terms to expire March 2nd, 2023. At issue, there are two at-large positions on the Renewal Wheat Ridge Board that have terms that expire on March 2nd, 2018. Shane Nicholson currently serves as the at-large representative on Renewal Wheat Ridge with his term ending on March 2nd, 2018. Walt Pettit currently serves as the at-large representative on Renewal Wheat Ridge with his term expiring also on March 2nd, 2018. Mr. Nicholson and Mr. Pettit were contacted to see if they were interested in reapplying for a five-year term on Renewal Wheat Ridge. Both Mr. Nicholson and Mr. Pettit responded they would like to serve for five more years. Mayor Starker is requesting ratification of the reappointments of Mr. Nicholson for a five-year term to expire on March 2nd, 2023, and Walt Pettit for a five-year term to expire on March 2nd, 2023.
Anyone who wishes to speak on this item? Councillors?
Is a motion in order?
Motion is in order.
This is two separate motions. I move to ratify the mayoral reappointment of Shane Nicholson at-large to the Wheat Ridge Urban Renewal Authority, doing business as Renewal Wheat Ridge, term to expire March 2nd, 2023.
Would you poll the council?
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. I move to ratify the mayoral reappointment of Walt Pettit at-large to the Wheat Ridge Urban Renewal Authority, doing business as Renewal Wheat Ridge, term to expire March 2nd, 2023.
I'm not sure if I cleared that. Please vote again. Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you very much. Are there city manager matters from you chief?
A couple of things. City manager wanted me to pass on to you. Today, the first law enforcement agency transition to Jeffcom. Golden, the Golden Police Department went live today. A couple of minor, very minor issues to start, but they got those rectified. Tomorrow, the Jefferson County Sheriff's Office goes live, followed by the West Metro Fire Department on Thursday. And then next week, Arvada Fire, Arvada PD, and then Wheat Ridge go live on the new system. Our cutover will be on, on Thursday, March 22nd of next week. And then the following week, the Lakewood Police Department and then the Evergreen Fire Protection District go live. So all, all lights are green, all systems are go. It looks, it looks like it's going to be a successful endeavor.
Excellent.
And then the second item the city manager had asked me to bring up is, there is going to be another Clercreek Crossing ODP community meeting on Thursday, March 22nd, from 7:00 to 8:30 PM at the Wheat Ridge Recreation Center. The developer, Evergreen, will be there to share their progress as well as the current development plan for the Clercreek Crossing and its employment area. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have a report from building, the Construction Department, wherever you are? Okay. City Attorney?
No report tonight, thank you.
Okay. Janelle, do you have a report?
I just wanted to share with council that the liquor authority passed a motion Thursday, last Thursday at their meeting. They're going to have, the, a resolution is going to be written to change the radius of the Needs and Desires Survey that is given, taken for new, new liquor licenses. There's a process where we have, we have a, an arrangement with a company named Otipus. And when, when there's a, someone applies for a brand-new license, they take a map and pinpoint that, and they draw a one-mile radius circle around there. And we currently have the one-mile radius. What has happened is, very often, the survey ends up being taken far away from at least some of the, I shouldn't say some, quite a few of the people that are surveyed don't live anywhere near the, the proposed new license. Sometimes they even live in a different city, Lakewood, Denver, things like that. So Robin did some research for them. They asked about it. And quite a few cities now have gone to this half-mile radius. So they agreed and they, it passed to, they haven't, at their next meeting, they will pass that resolution to, to go to a half-mile radius survey for businesses and residents that, you know, give their opinions, pro and con, if they agree with that new license. So I just wanted to pass that on to you. And they're within their authority to do that. They don't need approval from you to do that. So. Is that okay? Okay?
Larry?
Not tonight, thank you.
Yeah?
Nothing at this time, thank you.
I'm good, thank you.
I just wanted to say that George and I had our meeting on Saturday. It was very successful. We had a lot of interest. I'd like to report that tonight, Channel 9 reported that the G Line is going to take at least three months before it can open. So that's the best I know on that, and that's all.
I'm good. Thank you.
I just wanted to clarify a few things from citizens' comments earlier. In case it wasn't clear, no, there will not be an online survey for the city survey. We, as council, had agreed that we did not want to mix a scientific survey with a non-scientific result. Also, I'd like to clarify that Local Works did not make the survey. A third-party survey company made the survey, and Local Works had nothing to do with it. And then I would like, as council, for us to address, I believe our council rules are that we don't address citizens during citizens' right to speak. And if that is the case, then I'd like us to remember that. I feel like it's been kind of, we've been kind of slacky on that lately. And so I feel like we either are addressing citizens during citizens' right to speak or we aren't. But I think that we'd like, we should probably tighten up on that.
You are correct. Our rules do prohibit that, and we should, we should slap our wrists and we'll stop Monica?
Thank you. Can we just clarify that the conversion therapy did pass six to one? Correct, Janelle?
Yes. Yes, did I not say it correct?
Well, social media is great, so the misunderstanding out there was that it didn't pass?
No, no, no.
But it did, six to one. So I just want to clarify that for everyone out there.
Six to one with Councilmember Matthews voting no.
Okay.
Is that what I said?
Great, thank you.
Okay. With that further ado, we are adjourned.